I'm gonna have to talk to the county. 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 Yeah, yeah. Yeah, we're all there. 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 Yeah, I just got one forty-five. I got one forty-five the other day. Yeah, I got one forty-five. 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 Yeah, that's what I mean. Yeah, that's what I mean. Yeah, good way. Yeah, it's just the sun is good. Yeah, forty-five is good. Yeah, I don't want people coming back. You've got those trees off a little bit. Yeah, it's sunny there. It doesn't like some of the rain. Yeah, okay. Yeah, that's the way it happens. That's it. Yeah, it's like that in Ohio during six months. And I don't get anything with it. It's dirty in. We got some ticks. We got a virus. I think she's tested. She's completely healthy. I think I've had. She's been really got many points in her. I thought I'm nuts. They're over here. Right in. Get good ears. I should just sign the paper. Would you sign my name with this? Yes. Thank you. Oh, you got wonderful. I wanted to be a whole face. I tell my wife, "Sign." No, you gotta sign your own name. Nobody. We're gonna call this meeting forty-six. It starts on one. The same. Where's the town? Roll call, please.
Trusty King. Trusty Hale. Mayor Law.
Mayor. Um, yes. Uh, we got, they got three weeks. Anything on the agenda by that thing that most say?
It's concerning the permits. It's under H of the Enforcement Code. And I'm willing to wait until you get there, so.
We'd hear your questions, but we can't answer them either anyways.
I'll wait till I get there.
Anybody else? Present agenda?
Make motion to accept the consent agenda.
I'm sure.
On the basis?
Uh.
I like.
This is the one or is it? This is, this is the agenda? Consideration of the.
Can you read this?
Yeah.
Okay, discussion and consider, discussion, consideration and possible action for March 12, 2024 meeting. Discussion of possible approval of Resolution 2024-05 of the Town of Coyle. Oklahoma, the town approving action taken by the Coyle Public Works Authority authorizing issuance, sale and delivery of its Clean Water SRF Promissory Note to the Oklahoma Water Resources Board and containing other provision related there too. So, we've invited Mr. Matt to discuss this for us if you don't mind. In general topics that's related to an OWRB program for sewer only. Everybody wants to work on sewers, which that's fine. We got plenty to do. But anyway, it's authorizing, um, it's kind of complicated. You request a loan, but it's a forgiveness loan. It's a loan, and you know whether or not you'll be forgiven prior to entering into the law. And its purpose in this case is to develop a plan for the Town of Coyle slash CPWA. That's the interrelation here. We've got lots of projects that need our sewer. We know we need to check the lift station. We know we have outdated, well, we know we've got some sewer lines that may be collapsing on us. We know we've got brick manholes. All of these things are old, outdated, and eligible to be, uh, well, I'm gonna let Matt explain it because that's the purpose is to get a plan. The plan is very expensive, but the repair and replacement of all of these things are way more than even the cost of the plan. But before you can even start getting funding, ACOG grants, any other grants, matching grants, whatever, loan, other loan forgiveness, you gotta have a plan.
Can you take over?
Sure. I'm Matt Chell from, uh, the older Seminole Valley Engineering. I do a lot of work for cities, towns, and rural water districts, all throughout the state. This particular program is administered by the Oklahoma Water Resources Board, Clean Water State Revolving Fund. It's a loan program that's offered through the state. And each year, when the new fiscal year comes available, they have set aside a pot of money that's allocated from federal dollars that they give out to communities based off scoring criteria. So, they look at, you know, what's, what's your current debt you have? What are your rates look like? What's the median household income? Do you have any enforcement actions to DQ? And they have to issue so many, so many dollars of principal forgiveness loans. They don't, it's not called a grant. It is a loan, but some of the projects will be slated for principal forgiveness in which all the debt is forgiven, and you're not required to pay that back. So, this is what this is. Now that the town has audits up to date and things like that, they're able to apply for this. This particular loan can ask for up to one and a half million dollars. Some of the projects that give award principal forgiveness will get construction dollars. Some of the ones that were awarded planning grants come back following fiscal year and get awarded, uh, construction dollars to go towards the project. So, and a lot of the grant opportunities out there are geared towards projects that are shovel-ready, ready to go out and bid. So, so the town has a lot of issues on the sewer system. There's issues with the lagoons. There's issues with piping at the lagoons. There's issues with the pumps, land application system at the lagoons. There's issues with the lift station, and there's issues out of the collection system. So, I thought you can get a good principal forgiveness grant for planning, go ahead and get a permit in hand for all kinds of aspects throughout the system. That way, when other funding opportunities come around or this next round of funding comes available, you have shovel-ready projects. But it is competitive. There's no guarantee that you will receive this. And if you don't receive it, it costs the town nothing. So, if you do receive it, then you're going to receive, I think, four hundred thousand dollars financing that would be principally forgiven. So, it's a, it's a pretty good deal. It's, I mean, the program's pretty good, too. If you didn't want to borrow money, it's a, it's a low interest rate that you can pay back over twenty to thirty years. It's one of the better financing options for cities and towns that do need to borrow money. I'm not suggesting that you borrow money. I'm suggesting that you go for this opportunity and try to get some free money, basically. So, that's, you have any questions about the program?
At the end of the day, did we just get a, I'm sorry. It'll essentially be a group of plans that the state can then execute.
Yeah, it would be engineering documents, construction plans, and permitting. Do you have basically shovel-ready projects? And then from there, you can look at CBPG grants potentially. You can look at REAP grants, you know, potentially. You can look at principal forgiveness money next time it comes around. If you have ARBA funds become available again, so there's a variety of grant programs out there that, you know, if, if you have plans in hand, you get points. And you generally are in a better position to be able to capitalize on some of those opportunities, which is, it seems to be pretty important for the Town of Coyle and their financial position with, you know, a, a system that's not generating much revenue to be able to maintain the system.
That sounds pretty good. What do you think, Dusty?
Well, it's a, it's a planning grant. It's a forgiveness loan. Something we've talked about several times before. Um, and here we make our attention work. Um, and we've discussed in the past that before we go out on some of these that we do need to get a planning grant so we get an engineer coming here. And what I understand is the engineer that we hired can't have anything to do with anything going forward other than building the plan so that there's no conflict of interest in, in what they put together. Um, what I'm concerned about at this moment is we're discussing Resolution 2405. And what I'm reading in this resolution is something about us giving over our authority of promissory note to the Oklahoma Water Resources Board. And I'll be honest, I don't know what the Clean Water F promissory note is. It's, so what I'm reading in the resolution has nothing to do with the planning grants or.
It's not a grant.
Planning for future.
Not a grant. It's a principally forgiven loan.
I, I, okay, I apologize for my misstatement there. I understand that that could be the case. Okay. Um, very well worded, very well spoken. Um, this resolution, I don't read that in. That's the problem.
Okay. Anybody that wants to borrow money or receive a principal forgiveness loan through the Oklahoma Water Resources Board has to pass a resolution that says that you're going to do a financing through the Oklahoma Water Resources Board. This doesn't obligate you to move through and borrow money. There's nothing on here that says, "Yes, you're gonna do this. You have to do this."
Right, I understand. Um, I guess part of the issue is, do we have anything in here about that program? Anything that basically spells out how that works? What works or?
There's another resolution.
How long we have to consider it, like over it?
So, so the state, these applications are due on the fifteenth if you want to give this round of funding. So, if you don't want to move on now, you just wait till the next year to go for this. Uh, this round of funding, the State Revolving Fund, basically all the loans that are given out to the Oklahoma Water Resources Board, the interest that they collect off these loans. Oklahoma City borrows money for this program.
I see.
Everybody in the state borrows money from this. And the funds and the money that comes in from that, they secure through interest payments coming back on that allows them to buy out and provide these opportunities to smaller communities if they don't have much cash flow. So, this, this is a program that's been around for a long time in the state.
I'm doing this program for two years.
I'm doing this.
No, I just wanna make one.
You introduced this two years ago?
Yeah, this was born.
Okay. And so what are your questions on then if you're versed on what the Clean Water State Revolving Fund is? What's, what are you confused on if you aren't familiar with the program?
I would like to see more. I'm sure people in the town would like to see more on the State Water Revolving Fund other than just the resolution we have in the past. And part of the problem I have is that it's due by March fifteenth and it's March twelve.
True. So, I'm gonna. Hang on. You know, we've been focusing on the, the grant that we've had. We haven't, Matt gave me a phone call and asked me if we wanted to participate. And he asked that question last week. I don't know why you thought of this. I'm glad you did think of us.
I'm not gonna be wrong. I do appreciate it.
Yeah. And I don't know between now and next year what we have to lose.
I don't see. I don't either, and, and that's a part of my problem.
What? Okay, so hang on.
There's zero risk on this. The worst thing that happens, you get some free money and you get someplace. I mean, or you don't get funded. I mean, that's all it is on this.
Hang on. Do you have any question?
Well, the concern was, I thought maybe if Dusty was thinking, "It's gonna cost us something. It's only gonna cost us a year if we don't move forward with opportunities there to do it, and it's not gonna cost us any money. All we gotta do is start executing." And to wait to start executing, I'm not really, if I understood better, because it's not gonna harm us, and that money's gonna go away. You don't know when that, that money comes and who needs it for what reason. And every town's getting, the money's getting tighter everywhere we go.
Right.
And all of those are spot-on points. They really are. So, my concern is not, my concern is not having the rest of the information here to see where you're coming from and what, what this proposal's for. Um, I, I appreciate you thinking of it. I appreciate you bringing it to us. I wish I'd had a week to look at it myself. I, I'm gonna put it this way. I do understand the, the plan that he's, he's saying here. I don't understand the language in this resolution.
It was brought up by our, by our town attorney.
I, I appreciate that. That doesn't make me understand it anymore. That doesn't make me correlate this resolution with the plan he's bringing to us anymore.
We've got to move on this. We're gonna get that.
Right, I understand.
Well, I do want to make one comment to everyone who's in this room because when we discussed this last Thursday night, and you were, you were there, we understand we get points from our census. I don't know what has happened to our census, and I had no idea that our census has such an impact on this town. You go out and you look at what was turned in to our census for this town, our average median income is seventy-eight thousand dollars, and we are going to lose points on this, anything, and it may last for ten years. I don't know. Nobody's gonna try to fix it.
I have a question on that.
But that's one of the points.
What are, how, are there those points if the census goes up or goes down?
If we need to, you cannot tell me that our median income is.
No, no, it's not.
Okay, so there's here.
I am a gentleman. I don't know another issue.
Financial assistance is based on.
Okay, okay, wait a minute. Just a minute, let me finish, please. We are, we are recognized as a tier two, not a tier one.
Yeah, that's something I know the fight to on that other.
And this is why, because somehow our town did not anticipate in the census, and the ones that did averaged seventy-eight thousand median income. And the other people didn't turn anything in, or we wouldn't have that kind of an average.
I actually think that, um, part of the issue from what I found so far, and I don't have all the answers yet. I'm still looking. Part of the issue is that the census that was taken was the Town of Coyle zip code, not the Town of Coyle boundaries. That's what I, that's what I've come up to so far.
Well, like I said.
So, the actual town that, that this would actually apply to, I believe is far less than that, and there's several others that have indicated that that's probably, they probably more likely, they're trying to clean that up. Which puts us firmly into the tier one.
True.
So, that's something that I think we really need to get sorted out.
But I'm only bringing this up because it lowers our ability this time to be accepted. When they start scoring us, we're gonna score, this is meant for tier ones.
Right, and I think if, if we can get that down to where it should be more accurately, that'll help us a lot more with.
It'll, it'll help you, but you're not, you're not out if you're tier two. Walcomas is a tier two, and Walcomas got this same funding opportunity awarded to them last year. So, you know, if you don't ask, you don't get.
No, that's true.
So, and you, you don't, so.
Well, this, we have another resolution back in CPWA. This is a two-part resolution. Um, I, I wish I understood the resolutions, but I do have faith in our town attorney. That's why we hired him to, you may disagree, that's fine, to not jeopardize the town. He gets nothing really from this process. Uh, he has no, no, nothing in here except to protect our interests.
Honestly, my issue is, I don't see.
Well, I'm going to have to make a motion that we accept it on the faith and the, of our advice of someone that has done work for and our town attorney, that this is, will not harm, we may gain, but it will not harm the town for us to pass these resolutions and put our hat in the, in the ring at this time and see what happens.
I'm trying to push it out.
So, I make the motion, we accept this.
Motion, do it outside again.
Okay, make the search.
I'll say again. Oh, thank you.
I.
I oppose.
That's fine.
Well, strictly because I don't have enough understanding.
I'm, I, I have not read this, but I have been given advice that I value.
Does that, I appreciate, I don't, I don't.
I understand.
Pass it. This is passed.
Next.
Do you have any sign, yes?
I've got one.
Yep.
Here. Actually, we're increasing town floor support for the trailer bond.
Yes, can I please address this? Because it's somewhat related to our first discussion. Does anybody know that the Town of Coyle borrowed three hundred and forty-five thousand dollars back in nineteen ninety-five to refurbish our water towers through OWRB? I have no idea if that was a debt forgiveness loan or whatever it was.
That's a loan that we have to pay off.
Okay, you had to pay that one off.
It was a grant and the paperwork wasn't done properly, and you guys had to end up paying it.
Well, we're not doing that.
Done, that's just certain person, might somebody made it.
Oh, is that the one?
Yeah.
Okay, anyway.
Well, regardless, we had to pay it, but I, because staffing didn't do what they were supposed to do.
I, I agree with that statement. I've heard that before. However, OWR, O R, Water, Oklahoma Water, OWRB, did loan the town that money and did require a bond, I mean, yes, a bond, which I can't believe was only nineteen thousand dollars. But that's the bond that we're collecting on now for our embezzlement because no one had removed, they have been removed now. OWRB has been removed from that. They have, they have released this with the interest in the bond money that we're collecting against the bond that was related to this loan. Didn't know any of this until now. So, Liberty Mutual has canceled that bond on us because it was for OWRB as much as it was for CPWA. They are paying on the bond nineteen thousand dollars. I just signed the proof of claim today. But they canceled bond, and they don't want to renew it. Am I going correct here? Because it was intended to, for a different purpose than just bonding our employees. It was related to that debt. So, I would like to propose that we still retain the coverage of, let's see, we've got another one out there that's a three, uh, twelve. This one was nineteen. And Robert Stewart has proposed that we raise.
Said we can.
We can.
However, I spoke with him today.
Okay.
And, um, he's working with the, uh, Ohio, whoever we have the bond through right now.
The Liberty? The Liberty Mutual was Ohio casualty. CNA had Western.
That's the one that's the twelve thousand dollars?
Yes.
Okay, so it's them. They, we spoke with them. They don't want to increase it due to the.
Loss that they pay.
Mm-hmm. So, right now, it's been sent up to management to see if they'll increase it or not, and we may, may have to do a new application, um, to make sure that we're, our procedures that we're doing now, you know.
Yes, I, I guess.
So, he couldn't give me a quote on what it would be to increase it because it's been pushed up to the next level.
Okay, so we can't, there's nothing for us to approve tonight.
Right.
But you're gonna follow through on it. We're currently in place, the twelve. So, that's, that's our bonding, that's the, that's the capacity we're bonded right now.
So, essentially, we're bonded, but the option to raise that bond is off the table at this point in time. Nothing else changes. We're still covered where we were.
At twelve, but this nineteen has gone away.
Yeah.
Because it expired March.
March.
Yes, as in yesterday, two days ago.
After having them paid off several years ago.
I understand. We're lucky we had it. It wasn't, somebody was looking out for us.
There's nothing to do.
No, but that's why we're, we're, but I'm, I, I, I would like to see that hit at least thirty, thirty-five thousand. Um, hopefully, we can afford that. I guess when you have a loss, it's just like your house. Everybody starts raising the rates on you. Although, we paid on those other bonds.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's the deal there.
Okay. Discuss a possible action to approve on, file on, activating HMPG grant for the fire department and CPWA back at.
So, I have wanted to put this one on here because of all the discussion we had, we never approved actually finally to grant.
Oh, really?
So, we probably ought to do that before I send this in.
Well, do we have a resolution to participate like we did on this one and the ACOG?
They don't require a resolution.
No, but we have to file, we have to do a resolution to apply for it. It's not, the resolution is us authorizing you to go get this money. We have not, we need a resolution, just like we did on the ACOG grant.
That's not something that we've done every time in the past, or it wasn't something that I was.
Well, like we're all. But I don't know, is the grant being filed?
No, no, I, I haven't filed it yet. I'm working with the state to get that down within the next couple of weeks.
Please, please, it's due day.
Um, end of March.
Okay, well, if we have to pull a special meeting, I'm all for doing so. Are you, Carl?
Yes.
Once we have the wording, then you'll get that.
Yeah.
For us, or at least contact the attorney.
You, you sign every single money we need for you.
I think, oh, I could agree, but when you package these grants, the board's reservation is, means the town, the, the fire department is.
Yeah. I'll see, I'll follow up, make sure that we're all.
We're all, we're all on it more than I am.
All right.
Oh, yeah, we'll just need the documents.
Just go have that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, then it's turn.
Okay, update on upcoming town events.
Um, you've got in your packet a flyer for our spring clean that's scheduled for April the sixth from ninety-two at Park.
Okay.
Spring clean, ninety-two. Over at Park, we're just gonna watch the games and stuff, so.
I'll change some things on that. That's a lot easier to read now that was first round.
Is there, uh, anything more on there?
Uh, no, not any. Most, most classes.
I think we.
You've got in your packet a flyer for our spring clean that's scheduled for April the 6th from 9:02 at Park. Spring clean, 9:02. Over at Park, we're just gonna watch the games and stuff.
I'll change some things on that. That's a lot easier to read now that was first round. Is there anything more on there?
No, not any.
I think we, we don't have a continuing resolution on this.
Well, we've got it set aside.
I know we do on the fireworks. That we have a continuing resolution on the fireworks.
For-
As an annual reoccurring.
Right.
I don't know if we have one on this, so do many-
I don't think we have one yet, but we, that's something we discussed in January. Going forward, because of all the events during-
Just having a resolution stating an approximate timeframe of our events? Is that what you're thinking?
That it's approved.
But it's kind of a balance.
I mean, we can create one, for sure.
Again, we're still learning.
No, but I guess, I know we have one for the 4th of July.
Yeah.
Yeah, for that, should be more than that area of fireworks specifically.
Actually, we probably don't need to event that, you know.
Either we don't have to go down with every part.
Well, and that would back up in the budget too, more like it for giving the diesel town and that town sponsored that.
And then when approved, yeah. So, anyway, when we have that special meeting to approve this other grant, let's take care of that at the same time.
Okay.
Okay? Is that available on the table?
That's a big.
Okay.
Okay, next thing, financial report.
So, current balances, at the end of February, in general fund, we have $49,973.98. And the fire department, $49,333.53. And then also got the cash activity report and the budget to actuals in there.
Let me just show the packet, how it's going on the budget.
I'm not seeing that.
Yeah.
This is March, next month we start budgeting, right?
Um, once I get through the first two weeks, after the 15th, I'll start kind of working towards that based on what we've got so far. So, yep. That should be coming soon, maybe by March, but that might be pushing, but coming quickly.
That's it, Wendy's very busy.
Anything else?
Um, I think that's all I've got on that.
Medical report.
I bought a bunch of floating stop signs. But I took the mower into back and some pretty rough shape, but I'm sure you all seen all that.
Yeah.
It's coming up in CPWA, and it is a topic, so.
Oh, this is for an opening here. This is not about the lawnmower.
That's insane.
Okay. You see mowing at the end.
Anything else? Cemetery report.
Oh, no, wait a minute.
Hold it, hold it.
No, 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 he doesn't have anything else, but we do. This is discussion and possible action on opening a seasonal position for mowing and tree trimming.
I just kept telling that.
Yeah.
So, I put in your packet just a job description, kind of, just to discuss and, yeah, give us a starting point.
Well, as Mark so kindly pointed out, it's the first time a lot of us have mowed a yard in March.
We did. We did. I'll leave it to this, Wendy. But I would like to add to this, or at least hear me out, guys. We're getting, we're getting-
They're trying to pass this real quick.
You see, this is mowing and tree trimming, literally, mowing, yada, yada, yada. We are getting ready to start spending the grant money. We should be getting the, March the 15th, that's, or probably by next week, we'll have it.
Middle of the middle of March, I think.
Yeah. I think we need to, I know we've had a lot of complaints about streets and the holes in the streets and everything, patching them. And I'm thinking that this needs to include the street maintenance as well.
Okay.
I think, let me get first one. I think we need to review this part out.
Oh.
Strictly on-
On Wade, so Wade takes care of the legumes?
Completely.
And the irrigation field?
Everything.
Okay.
What about irrigation field?
Well, the irrigation field, they can-
So, just the legumes?
Just the legume there. Inside that fence or-
Okay.
But let's add the street maintenance.
Add street maintenance? Okay, so I can take the section that's on-
I've got a shift in way for the street maintenance and stuff, making it down his-
Well, he's gonna be really, really busy.
We'll fix and pick it off him, so he can do this project we got coming up.
And I've got a problem that we approved street signs over a year ago and they're still not up. So- So, I think this person needs, it's not an assistance. I think, again, we need to be, add this to this and as we talk to these people, make it very clear what our expectations are.
Okay.
And I think this is, thank you very much for this, okay?
As far as street maintenance, could you happen to look at the patch job that was going on at St. Col?
Well, I saw it when, I wish that somebody had been overseeing it because there was no entrance. We just kept digging and digging until we hit the line. There should have been, we should have found a trail of water going down if there was a break in the pipe. I saw, I inspected the hole and that ground was so solid as I was watching them dig. There should have been drainage, a hole.
There should have been something.
And they should have stopped and we should have paid them $3,000 to dig that damn hole.
We still had to know whether it was a crack or not, or a hole.
Well, it would have been a hole, there would have been a hole. And I really wish that we'd gotten a camera out and run the camera through there to look. I just, I learned something, I learned something when I inspected that hole. We all approved it, but I do not think that was unnecessary. It should have been scoped and we should have been overseeing it. And if they didn't find a hole after digging, we didn't have to go 12 feet down. And that's just my personal opinion, because there should have been some evidence of losing water somewhere else. And also, once they scraped off the top of the asphalt and you can, it's gonna cave in again. Everybody needs to know this. There is deteriorated lumber, I took pictures of it, underneath that asphalt. And as that deteriorates, that asphalt's gonna cave in again, just like it did. That was the cause of your cave-in, was that lumber that's underneath, I don't know. I think it was railroad ties from when there was a train station and the train was coming through. And they just asphalted over the train station. I'll share my pictures with you. But there's a layer about this much of deteriorated lumber underneath that asphalt. It's gonna cave in again. And we need to document that, you know, let's check it out. We'll get, you know, get a foot down below the lumber and there's no drainage. That's the cause, was those rotting timbers. So, anyway. And like I said, I'll share the pictures with you because it shows that it's a black, black layer of rotting wood underneath the asphalt. They literally paved right over those rotting wood. So, that's my two cents worth on that street maintenance. I just need, we just need to be more careful when we're digging our hole. And C, it's not the first one we've dug up and didn't find anything. I will have to admit that. Randy Hope thought he had a leak.
Okay, so I'll take the street maintenance from the other job description we have and just add it to this. Is there anything else that you guys see that needs to be added?
I like it, I think this works out really well and it raises up their expectations. As on-
Yeah, okay, all our jobs should be that way.
Yeah, well done.
Okay.
Well done. So, are we?
But we should set a, I would like to start out with a, not to, part-time job. It should be, I, I-
Honestly, I look at this being seasonal.
Yeah, seasonal.
Well, actually, it's not seasonal because you're gonna be doing trees and ditches and all that. He could be digging out some of the ditches back there. Yeah, you're right there.
Well, I would like to limit this, at this time, to say 25 hours a week. And anything over 25 hours has to have approval by, you can get approval by, from us. If they're, they need to understand if they're, okay, it's 4th of July and they need to mow the ballpark. Of course, last year, somebody else mowed the ballpark and wasn't a problem. But if there's a reason for them to exceed, then they need, send us an email, I think. Just send, because we don't need a special meeting, send us an email, say such and such approach. Work is required, we've got an emergency, we've got a tree down over the road, whatever. And if we all respond, or at least two of the three of us respond, yes, then tell Andy's approved to spend the, it's not, hate is overtime, because overtime can hit till over 40 hours. Somehow put that in the job description, that it's a 20-hour, part-time, 20-hour. However, hours over 20 hours must be approved by the board. It says 20 hours up there already.
And maybe not succeed 40, so you could still get it though.
Well, I'm not worried about that. Historically, I don't mind going over one week or two weeks of an emergency, a flood or whatever. I don't mind paying the overtime.
Well, in that case, we're gonna see, there's gonna be, we're gonna be able to know what's going on.
Yes.
Probably directed more than needs to be approved.
Right. So, just this mowing, we know.
Mowing takes a lot of time.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, that's my two cents. So, do we need to make a motion that we add to the staff, a part-time mowing, train removal, street maintenance position?
I think so.
I make a motion that we do so?
My second. Oh, my favor?
Aye.
Does that give you one full time and one part time?
Nope, we only have two part times.
And a full time.
Oh, yeah.
It's already included in it. I just know we forgot about it.
Oh, sorry. This is possible action on both, we got a cemetery answer.
Oh, yes. Does anybody have any more information?
Well, I have cemetery first.
You have cemetery report?
I don't have any report.
I have a discussion and post, I'm replacing cemetery.
I haven't heard from Mr. Bobby Junior. I asked him to go check it and I haven't heard from him, so I need to rattle his cage.
Honestly, we do have time with interlopers.
I know, so it's not over yet.
We might need to get together, figure out a day or a weekend that we all get together and do it. I mean, I've talked about that a few times, I'm up for that.
And I need to find out when Stinchcomb was gonna have, he hadn't had his cattle in there this winter, but I don't know when he brings them in. Probably takes them off with pasture, which is, he may have cattle, does anybody raise?
I don't know.
I haven't been over there for a long with that.
Does that, does that call under community cleanup efforts or not?
Looking at me?
I didn't think it would.
Whichever one of you wants to answer, considering she ran lines.
Why did you even ask? I was looking at cattle somewhere else, so.
No, I would think it would.
Well, I was asking if that falls under the community cleanup because that might be a good time to, if nothing else, introduce this community to the cemetery. Get some folks out there to maybe clean up around some of the- We know we're gonna have to set the corner posts.
And we gotta cut tree down.
One day, it's not, it's not set for one day, so it's- Right, right. Right, but we could, we could have a day that we could have, you know, advertise and get people from the community to come out and help us clean up around the fence, help to pull some of the old stuff down. Or we could go in and set those corner posts first and a couple days later go in and plant everybody in and-
And beat them home.
Uh, for the corner posts? Yeah, we could use the order thing.
That's my point.
They'll have to be allocated and all that done.
Oh, I understand.
Yeah.
He's getting ready, put in some metal posts for us.
You already got the order? That's a fun time, enjoy that.
It's one of dads.
Oh, that's gonna be a really fun time.
Yeah.
I'm in the line, I have six kids, let them go down. Is that something we, maybe we have a community that won't be stopped here? Is that something that you gotta be interested in doing? Going out, helping to clean up around?
Well, it's not something that someone, you need a little bit of strength to rope up wire. You need a little bit of strength to manhandle a tree saw.
I figure that's one of those things that that cemetery seems to be kind of forgotten from a lot of communities that didn't even realize it's out there.
Oh, I know.
This might be something that, just another community project.
You're talking over all cleanup.
Yeah.
And, and that's-
Right, we can make a, we can make a weekend of it or a day of it anyway, going out, cleaning up.
You gotta keep in mind when you build a fence that we'll have to set the corners and all that one day and then immediately let it stand in and re, it'll be at least a few days.
Yeah, well, that's what Carl already talked about.
Remind me to talk to Stinchcomb since I need to ask him if he's gonna have cows around or if he's setting live wire, electric fence to keep them out of cemetery.
Yeah, that works.
I don't, I don't think he rotates that.
Well, that's, we can get that information and we can plan on that.
They talk about mowing, weed eating, everything too.
Why not? Why not? We've got trash around there, pull some of the old dead limbs out, but, I mean, let's make it, let's take some pride in it.
Well, one of the things that happens every year is the concrete, Bermuda grass growth. Bermuda grass, there's a lot of stones set in the ground that are flat.
Right.
And they have to be, I know Kevin went out there with the weed eater and cleaned those stones off.
That sprayer was 42.
Whatever got it.
None of the sprayers in there, and I don't think it ever got used. And I don't think it has a boom on it because I didn't get one with a boom because it's a good issue anyways. But a boom, there's a boom accessory that's available.
What is a boom? Are you talking about white wand?
The horn that comes out with the sprayer.
So, you can drag it behind and it's got four or five nodules and everything and you can drive over everything.
Doesn't the old one have a boom on it that we could probably get to?
I don't know, but I'm talking about-
But we have a sprayer and that was, the idea was to start using that remedy.
Remedy to get rid of the Johnson grass out of the cemetery.
Hang on a second.
I was gonna say, if we do, I mean, definitely have something to take some of its damages out, that's done or something.
Right.
But then on a spraying, I mean, me personally, I don't know how you all feel, I wouldn't want a bunch of dead grass over mine. I'd rather have it edged, cleared.
Well, but the problem is is that we gotta kill off Johnson grass.
The weeds, not the grass.
Oh, and the sandburrs, oh my God, the sandburrs and the Johnson grass.
Remedy doesn't kill Bermuda grass, it only kills-
Correct. So, the spraying, the spraying we're talking about is to kill off the weeds, not actually-
Kill the Bermuda grass.
Not, yeah, we're not trying to sidestep cleaning it up.
Trying to make them go away.
Coming back.
Yeah, I'm not gonna understand, but I don't-
So, I think there's enough- Anybody got any more questions on this?
It sounds like you wanna set fence, you wanna mow and clean up. Don't know whether if you wanna do anything for gate, if you break it down and three or four banksmen just get people to sign up for those.
We're kind of on a roll here, so carefully, you're gonna have more stuff.
Well, I mean, if you organize the whole town, we get lost. If you do one project at a time, you'll do a better job than somebody else. Say, oh, this is good and a good time.
That's something, let's table this for our special meeting. It's gonna need approval here.
We've all got kind of really busy weeks, so let's make this, let's kind of see what Stinchcomb's gonna do.
Okay.
And then let's, let's have another meeting specifically for this at some point. It wouldn't take long. It wouldn't, no, I don't think it'd take long, but that way we can just-
Okay.
I think this, uh, this is enough that it can be a tone for a meeting.
Okay.
I'm not real fond of all the special meetings.
No, I just wanted to know tonight, but the last is coming.
Okay, so I'll make a motion that we table this, uh, further information, all of that.
Can I second it?
You got a table, or you got a motion, you got a table, can I say it?
Yep.
Now we can say it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're on to the...
Four, four, the four, the four.
Sorry, in one second. Okay, um, the only thing I had on there was that there was, um, the violation that I sent that we got from Henry Cody, uh, compliance for the fence.
Did anybody go out and look at the link as to what it was and... And that the whole purpose is...
Are you ready to move on to that? Okay.
Yeah.
That was just the report.
Oh, do you have a report for community enforcement, other than we have resent?
Just that, that we sent a violation for the defense issue.
Defense issue. We, we started that process over again. And... Okay. Discussion and possible action on approval of ordinance number twenty-two-four-oh-one of the board trustees of the town of Coyle, Oklahoma. Providing for adoption of international property management code, latest edition adopted by the state of Oklahoma. It's a...
Terminal hall?
It's appendices and annual amendments thereto. The repealer, the savings, severability, codification, penalty clause, and declaring an emergency. And then we declare the emergency, then it require, if all three of us agree, then we approve it tonight, and it goes into effect immediately. Did I get that right?
Yes.
Um, our new code die is trying, our ordinances are so lacking. And we've got so many dilapidated buildings and burnt-out trailer houses, et cetera. Do you have more to add to that?
When I spoke to him about it, he just, this is the code that's, um, been adopted by the state of Oklahoma, and it's just kind of a general property maintenance code.
Which we actually adopted the statutes of the state of Oklahoma.
We did on the, um, I think on the abatement.
On the abatement, yes, yes.
But...
Which allows us to place lanes on these homes.
Yeah.
Uh, properties.
So this just adds to it, will it do, will it do more?
Well, it gives...
Well, it does a lot more than that, though.
It does a lot more.
This is, the international code is basically a blanket. Uh, every code you could possibly think of to apply in any, any initial setting.
And this one is specifically related to maintenance of property. There's more to it as to building codes. This is not the building code, this is the maintenance code.
Yeah, and that maintenance code is, again, it's, it's a blanket.
Oh, I know the...
It's adopted to cover every possible metrology, et cetera. The problem that I have with the blanket codes such as that is that there are things in there that could be enforced upon our folks that doesn't necessarily need to be.
But that's...
And then we get to pick and choose on some of that.
Okay, wait a minute.
I mean, I'm sick. All this stuff you're going to ask.
That was what I was going to say.
Right.
That's why we asked to see what's being...
Right.
It all, it still survives.
After us, the next board, it goes through them as well.
And people, I need to know who they're electing.
They need to know who they're electing, that's right.
Yeah.
Um, I don't feel comfortable with this on a number of reasons, but...
Why should we be less than the state of Oklahoma? Why should we be accepted?
Because there's a lot of things that are done here that aren't the problem, aren't bad, but don't fall into the state code, because the state code is written more for city of Oklahoma, cities, Tulsa, et cetera. They require certain things of their residents, that a lot of our residents, quite frankly, can't afford.
That's the reason, goes to us, we say, yea or nay. If it goes on, we say, no, it don't, it's not trapped there.
I get that.
It don't go on.
But it said, we say, nay this week, and somebody else says, yea next week, and we're created a problem.
How is that room saying, no, it's done?
I can tell, we're not the ones saying, no, anymore.
Doesn't know how any law is.
Yeah, I'm trying, anybody...
No, it's not, actually, but...
Okay, so...
Yeah, go ahead, yeah, she's asking to speak, so it's...
This is what I wanted to speak on, because I am along the lines of what Dusty just said. It is, it does blanket a lot of things that come along, and, um, I am not totally against permits. I'm thinking, hey, if you have somebody building something beside you, or burning something beside you, would be concerned if something happens to your property or whatever. So I have lots of questions that if you decided to approve this particular, um, this ordinance, to approve these codes for, uh, code enforcement and keeping our city safe and healthy and things like that. So it mentions permits, I got, uh, Lindy was very kind, printed this off for me, that's also online, is that if I wanted, let's just, I'm gonna give you lots of for instances, because it could follow, okay?
It's gonna be lost tonight.
No, I'm just gonna tell you, that blanket statement could fall under so many things of maintaining your property. So, for instance, Jim and I, you know, we live down this red, uh, barn building, and we have a large patio, and we plan on building a porch later. Would we have to report to the city saying, hey?
This is not building codes, we do not have permits for building.
But, but part of the penalty says, under section five of this ordinance, it says, "Any person, firm, or entity who shall violate a provision of this code or fails to comply with, therewith..." It's gonna be fast, I'll read fast, I'm sorry. "Or with any requirements of who erects, constructs, alters, repairs, removes, or has erected, constructed, altered, repaired, or removed a building or structure in violation of this code, or a permit, uh, or of a permit, or a certificate issued therewith by guilt of a misdemeanor." So what I'm saying is, if you decide to use these ordinances, then there's gonna have to be permits to say, here's what you're allowed to do, here's how much permit's gonna cost, here's the timeframe of those permits.
We have to fuck those permits in.
No, that's what you're saying, and...
I mean, it's on the...
As permits, so what specific permits would the city have? Would you have an erection permit?
Carl's got the floor.
And then our message is, no, we have the right to say no on that.
I, I understand that, but...
Not, not the total force, guys, us. We say no, that's it. It's stopped right there.
It's still, it's not, it's already the building code.
No, we're not talking about adopting building codes.
No, this is a property maintenance code, which is a...
Currently, we do not have any building codes required.
No, no, we still don't have a building code, but what she's talking about and what's hitting you is, in effect, a building code. If you add to your property, take away from your property, however you do that, it can...
But there's no enforcement unless we vote to have a permit.
I understand that.
No, you don't, or you wouldn't be worried about this.
I'm worried about somebody voting to do it. That's not...
Now, now, let's talk to this board, I'm worried about it here.
No, 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 you can do that.
Okay, hang on, hang on, hang on.
Okay.
Hold on a second, hold on, hold on. Hold on that thought.
So Dusty's point is for future, your point is for now.
Exactly.
Okay. The problem is, as, as a board of trustees, you were voted in to not only take care of the present, but the future.
And so you...
I'm not done talking, Joanne.
All right, whoa, whoa, whoa. We only know that.
I get the heck of it by raising my hand.
Excuse me, I didn't know you were so touchy. I apologize. Could, please continue.
What I'm saying is, have any of you guys read in totality this resolution, an international thing that you're wanting to adopt and bring in? Do you know for a fact all of the pluses and minuses and things that can and can't happen? Because you keep saying, we have the power to stop and not stop. You are human, and you have that power in this position, I'm assuming, I don't know for a fact, but I have witnessed, in my time being in this town, that this person has this guideline, and this person has this guideline, and this person has this guideline. And it's all based upon feelings and decisions, emotions, and relationships at the time that it's presented.
Exactly.
This is gonna have to be a, not a Dusty, Carl, and Joanne making a decision, but the guidelines that is outlined in it. If that policy right there, right there states that in order to change anything, you have to have a permit or have to have approval, are you gonna require us to tell you when we're gonna replace our porch, because it's fallen in? I would assume you would say, absolutely fix it, because I don't want you falling through and breaking your neck. But what if you decide you don't like the color or the type of wood I'm gonna put on it, and you say, no? All I'm saying is, this is really, 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 um, subject to three people.
Exactly. And the next three people can sit at this table and approve that, and you can do nothing about it.
I can, I can voice my opinion, just like I voiced it tonight.
Exactly.
So back to my question that I asked, have the three of you read and studied that and know all of the things that it says?
And it's about four hundred pages.
Okay.
Point.
Well...
I haven't looked at it, yes.
That's the worst thing, is a blanket. When you say blanket this, it covers so much, and you don't even know.
And as long as we control the code enforcer... And give him guidance, and approve whose houses he's putting them on.
Well, there's, there's...
But I'm just telling you, all of this about, what about the next guy? The next guy can just vote for this, just like we can tonight, and there's nothing you can do with it.
Yes, and we can absolutely, we say we're likely, we are right.
So, the point being this, do we clean up this town or not?
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
And what's the problem?
Then what's the problem?
There are a thousand problems, but I mean, let me, let me take this one for granted.
Some people can't address that to other people.
Okay. Our ordinance is not just subject to what we have to say about. If someone else notices something in the ordinance that they have a problem with, they can come in and make a complaint. And if it's in our ordinances, their complaint is valid and lawful. Okay? So that causes another problem, and we have a hard time, we're hard pressed at that point in time, and saying, yeah, your complaint's valid, but we're not gonna get in with it. Or, no, we disagree with you, we're not gonna allow that to stand, well, it's in the ordinance. So that becomes another issue, okay?
So...
That's beyond our control. All right, so here's my third point that I'd like to make real quick. Um, when we met this gentleman, we got a rather long discussion about what our expectations of him and our town were to be. I am not at all opposed to fixing our ordinances, so that we can clean up the town and bringing them current. And in fact, that was the discussion that we had with him, was, would you be willing to go through our ordinance and help bring our ordinance up to date?
Now, you do realize that by state law, we have to recodify all of our ordinances in twenty-twenty-five, next year. Meantime, this, until that happens, we can, we can choose literally out of this ordinance is what we, what we prioritize our goals to be. Because we can't address everything in this ordinance. We can prioritize, we can give instructions, and until this is passed, until this is, our ordinances are not written in a manner that they are very enforceable. That's why we've had to pull back on being weird, we've got new guidance, how to do it.
This is also why we took the time to, to speak with them and discuss this with them.
Right.
We need them to go through our ordinance and identify what needs to be brought up to date, what needs to be changed to be in agreement with the state.
And meantime, we do nothing to clean up this town. I am gonna make a motion that we approve this ordinance, uh, this resolution here, approve a ordinance, and adopt it. And in the process of recodifying all of the town ordinances, covering this manner, we can have hearings on it, we can have whatever you want, rewrite our ordinances, then we can repeal this upon the time we recodify by next year, by law we're required to do. It's a big frickin' project. Meantime, we should not stop trying to clean up this town, there are hazards.
And there's nothing that stops us from doing that, not adopting it, no.
Our ordinances are not strong enough.
Okay, and we can change those ordinances that aren't strong enough.
They don't start wrong enough.
By adopting a blanket ordinance...
Can we call those things?
...cause it's more harm than...
I disagree with you.
My, my biggest fear of the whole thing is, is that if you do pass this, and it's a big blanket, and there's a lot of stuff in there, so if, uh, uh, somebody that lives in town knows the law and knows the blanket, and they, they see something going on, they come in here, and they, that's something, you say, no, we're not gonna worry about that, it's not that big of a deal. But if somebody comes in and complains about it, you're gonna have to obey the law of the state, states. And if you don't, it's working back on you.
People are allowed to, okay, there's, they're, okay.
That's what I'm saying, I don't hear about it.
There's called due process.
Right.
You know, I know a lot about due process, I didn't get much due process the last time we had this problem. Okay? They will have due process, they will get an ordinance violation, they will have a judge, they have the right to appeal, just like Mr. Weir has. But that ordinance, unless it is something this board deems, we, that's why we won't prioritize, and we can establish what we want done. These burned-out places, these places where children can crawl in and fall through the floor, and nobody bothers us about that? I mean, does that not bother anybody in this frickin' room?
I think that's on two sides of the story. We're talking about law-abiding people who are trying to take care of their property, as opposed to people who are not being in the code.
We, we'd be these all night long, we're done.
Can, can, may I say one more thing? I, I would prefer this be tabled until we can, like, look at the ordinance that you possibly think are not strong enough.
At this time, we need to get this town cleaned up. We have our, we will set the priorities, we, 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 he's asked to do this, we will have another meeting with him, we'll set the priorities of what we want him to do. We have some other priorities of how many ordinances he writes a month, because we can only deal with so much. We've, you know, I'm sorry, we have to move on this, we have to get this town to be a safe environment for our people, or each one of us are guilty if something happens, and we didn't even make an effort. So I make a motion that we approve this ordinance.
You got a motion, I have a second. I'll say it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Now, it is not an emerg, uh, I, I won't even ask to declare an emergency cause, because this did not pass with three votes. It will take thirty days, we will have to pro, uh, print in the newspaper, whenever you pass a new ordinance, you have to publicize it in the Guthrie newspaper, and we need to approve the bill to pay that, whatever it is, because it'll be whatever's required. Is that, does, I make a motion that we approve the posting of this in state Guthrie, is there a second?
There is.
I'm sure there is.
Aye.
Dusty, open your, your, your hearing. Now, Dusty, I wanted to ask...
We're over this topic, unless it's not really, is it an...
It does pertain a little. What I'm saying is, and I'm gonna say something, Mark and I bought an older home that was related to shamples.
And you're gonna make...
We are improving on it every day.
I wouldn't worry about it at this time. We obviously don't have time to write ordinances or anything like that, so.
Don't let your yard clean up.
Thank you.
I did go to conference and, uh, I found out that our, what's the name deal here? That it already been done and they had to do it and they put the highway on it. And that already, no, it got there, it all got there. Like, trying to get a hold of it.
Oh, so she is trying to get.
So. The current agenda is that we've got a new flood, I mean, does that, I mean, like, well, what the batteries are? Okay, that's what I, I just wanna make sure I understand.
They had to do it when they put that highway in.
Yeah, I know, because they'll change the flow, they'll raise the level, they're great.
So what was addressed when we talked about this about two years ago? Was that we would have to go through and do all the measurements to the survey. And then we would have to page somebody to go through and draw the new map. But our government should have already done that with FEMA, required any construction to be undone. Would you have measurements and all that should have been done? But if what he found out's true or right, then that means that the mapping and everything should be united.
He wanted to get it, yeah. But, but that's what, if my ears perked up, get some of that money.
I will make this comment. In twenty, two thousand and three, or two thousand and two, FEMA did a study. Now, I don't know if this is a new study because the old study has been lost. So my mom had to hire and personally pay for a new study. So this needs to be a study, a current study, or it doesn't exist.
No, this, this test is and has to be a current study because the new bridge and all the erosion that takes place after that, it's been completely, it's had changed the landscape since twenty twelve.
Right.
It's like, so all of my ten years at least.
But the original, the original one, and I will tell you that the, the last study that my mom paid for, due to the widening of the bridge, it increased the flow of the water and made the town safer and her property and everything else.
Right, just about, when we, I was down there and he said something about seven wrong. I said, well, when it flooded in twenty nineteen, it never did get in town. It got closed, we didn't get in. And they said that, oh, right, it should have. And it did not.
Because now the bridge is wider.
And so they, they said, FEMA should be the one done.
Well, I hope they find it.
We're, we're in the process of trying to find it.
Find it, that's good, that's.
And this will be, they should be done within the last couple of years, it will have to be.
Yeah, I hope that because the old one.
I don't know if you're aware, um, we talked about it last night, but something else that's gonna help the town too. If y'all hadn't noticed, over on Triple X at the end of May, District Two came in here, four weeks ago.
Yeah.
They put that cover in there.
They put the, yeah, put the cover in, ready to lay it up.
Three foot cover is out, big enough for the amount of water that's.
For that water goes in there, it's gonna be really interesting. It's a really good idea, a couple of words that we are not quite sure that it's.
Well, I will tell you this, since I've been here since nineteen forty-nine, they tried to fill it up and.
They've called it once before. And it washed out, yeah.
So we're, so it's gone.
So. They can't even put it in? So, uh, we've taken pictures of it so we know, so we can, so we can take it when a year from now it's washed out or whatever.
Well, I'm worried about the water backing up and.
Yeah, right, but I mean, we can say it hasn't backed up. So after the first big rain or whatever, if we've got proof for, you know, when it does start collapsing or deteriorating, then we can go back.
Well, like I said.
One of the things that they did also, they went through and they cleaned the ditch lines out. And when the water has backed up in the past, I've got some pictures of that as well. One of the things that I noticed was all of the debris and, uh, the overgrowth in the ditch line that was holding and keeping the water down.
Which is why we look at this guy cleaning this.
Hopefully this will let it flow easier. Yeah, that would.
They're gonna get the trees and stuff out of it. And they're gonna fix it, we can go through there and mow it.
Well, that's something.
Just straight down, you can't mow it. Their ditch going out.
Oh, yeah, yeah, well, they need to get that demo work, uh, they were buying a new demo.
They got trees along the line now.
You're talking about, for, for, and the people that go off to the river.
They do have a demo work that's been down, or actually went down, and so he just bought a new one or was in the process of buying a new one within the last one.
That is a section line.
So, yeah, so he'd be able to go through and cut all that back, clear that ditch a lot faster. You don't have to go brush hogging anymore, Carl, unless you get bored on the.
I'm talking about that, I'm not, that's a different, you're, you're gonna hold your place. I'm trying to just go straight out from that cover there.
Oh, going straight out, out east? That's, that's county too.
That's county, that's a section line through there.
Yeah.
Yeah, and then counties, we've, that's not on city limits.
He does, but he, he's been doing it on Triple X, I don't know, we haven't discussed that, but that's something that, that's.
That's the one that's gonna get all the water out.
If it makes it through the three foot hole, it's not gonna go anywhere, is what I'm saying.
It's a hole, it's a tree and stuff.
We just have to be prepared, the town starts flooding. He's gonna have to do this. Pull it out of the hole. Literally, I'm serious.
It will, it will block the, the water. It'll force it out and it'll suck and it's gonna be bad.
I'll, I'll say, you know, about my heart, I thought we should be able to get it to up in one, in one. I should have done, figure what the, that plan is.
Yeah, I was probably about two years old when they tried.
They tested the side, I guess, muddy and that was, I was sure that everything was good and worked.
I haven't always verified or improved it, it worked.
Well, it worked, I was outside, it's very loud.
Some people will feel it loud enough.
Well, if they're in the homes, it's different.
Well, that's not for in-home deals.
That's right. It was very loud outside.
Well, that's something that we, we've worked out in the past and talked about in the past. And depending on the tree and the time it's flowing, it will change the volume, the depth of level of that, even for folks outside. That's something else football, they want to look into again as a grant to raise it up.
Or raise it up and also get a second.
I've talked to about it, they've said that if we raise it up twenty feet, it will cover the entire town.
Should, should.
So.
Get it above the tree line or something.
Yeah, and it would be a lot cheaper and easier to get, not raise twenty feet than it would to try to put in a section one over here. Uh, but these are options that we're probably gonna look at again, nothing that you're gonna have a better vis of change than businesses are coming on.
Let's start at one more again.
And I have some other stuff to add, it is just for my views, my, my views, I know. A lot of form stuff. It's small, so it has a, in, in position. I guess that's all I got. Do I got any questions?
I will, under new business, I have one statement to make.
Uh, new business?
I'll just get it over so I don't forget it. I met with the Assistant DA on Friday and they are proceeding with the embezzlement indictment. It's been D several months though, because I pretty little think she's gonna go through all the thousands of pages that we've put together. And she wants to totally understand it before she files charges. But she's in place there in Guthrie and she's got all the documentation. She's met with the auditor and she's met with me. So.
Anything else?
I'm good.
Will she be here?
Make the motion, you can.
I'll say.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. About eight seventeen?
Oh, Charlie, I just. Matt wasn't to apologize for leaving, his family had planned to take him out to dinner tonight.
Yeah, he's, so he had to excuse.
He, he asked me if they were the same resolutions, the way they were in comparison.
Yes, yes, so. I was gonna say, in the town board, you're talking about city council.
Guthrie really likes, some of the other places around here really like him. And he does have some deep duties.
Yeah, he has interest in it, I'm finally gonna get things done. He's, he's like, with more integrity, he's got skin in the game, but he would have that, where their head's skin. Okay, does he, is there water in there? Like a pump or what?
I don't know. We still gotta figure out how to level it up tomorrow. And we gotta figure out how to level our legumes.
Go ahead, Lily.
I was considering that he had stayed in the, in the. I wasn't there, just called him. But that's okay, that's okay, that's, that's, that's okay, I'll get the information and, I mean, he's real good. Getting up experience. We've walked all over that spot, I've taken a picture. We are bored, we think we gotta, we gotta get a diet.
So that's what, so, Joanne?
Yeah.
Don't you know that's why people go in the law? Here's what the law says, here's what it really means. He's hitting me in the nose. Well, it goes back to the penalty thing too, so.
My issue is.
I'm gonna hit, I mean, they're gonna have to get it in. No, actually, I think that's, he's like, hey, let's. Yeah, I, because.
I'll tell you what, if, if this works out that way, I, I hope you see me fall over in that sense alone, okay?
We just gotta get our hand on the list, it's not getting recognized, so I'm like, we're gonna go.
All this, uh, board of trustee, our board of order, we're eighteen. Little Paul?
Mr. King?
Yep.
Mr. King, here, bring him on.
Here, welcome, yes. Again, we got three down through if you want, if you wanna talk about on the agenda. Okay, this is agenda.
Going in last time. I make a motion that we can bring this up.
Good one, that's seven more. I might be more compared more to the board meeting. We're on the agenda, let's get that on the agenda for next time.
Okay, well, let me, maybe care for, okay. First item on the agenda is this, is the sister or brother resolution that we just discussed and asked in general town meeting regarding approving the request to be included in this program is what this, is that not what this resolution is?
Yeah, we just, yeah, but Matt told us about.
Yes. So since we've already discussed this, uh, I'm just gonna make a motion, if we got sister, we need brother, so I'm gonna make a motion that we, uh, vote to approve resolution twenty twenty-four oh six of court public works borrower uh, for financial assistance through the clean water result, that's your clean water state involving fund program and approving and authorizing clean water funding for the Oklahoma Water Resources Board in a total of three hundred and ninety-two thousand five hundred dollars. Total, uh, let's see, authorizing it and authorizing its execution, approving and authorizing the execution of the funding agreement and approving the various payments, authorizing the establishment of the pros projects, project cost disbursement account, that would be a new bank account for the funds to reside in, and authorizing payment of fees and expenses and approving the professional services agreement uh, contained there too. And that, there is a, the professional service agreement that they're referring to is a contract with Matco to do the mapping. He will be mapping our sewer system, um, outlining and determining what are, what makes up our system, again, lift station, manholes, sewer lines, et cetera. Yes, I do know that DEQ contacted us three years ago, four years ago, when they were wanting us to expand our irrigation field, pass the ball field. We worked really hard to get grandfathered in so we didn't have to have those expenditures when we absolutely had no money three, four years ago. And so I will make sure that that's included in this new plan, et cetera.
May, I'm sorry, may I ask a question on this? Um, first of all, I appreciate all the water, clean water in this possible, uh, not a grant, um, a loan that could be, that could be repaid by somebody else. Uh, there's a reason I brought this up. Um, let me see, you were bringing something, a possible disbursement, explaining other things. Oh my goodness, there's just so much in here, I totally forgot it. I'll ask you if I think of it.
Okay, well, the point being, this is the brother to this.
Yes, yes.
This is actually hiring, I'm gonna carry it over.
And that's why, that's, and that's why I'm saying that the contract professional service agreements that we're talking about is Matco.
Yeah, and the plan, because he had mentioned that for us to be able to get into this program, we had, we had to have a plan. And the time constraints is like, hey, it's the fifteenth of March and today's twelve, so.
Just FYI, it's manned and another, there's actually, we haven't signed it, but we don't have a contract, so we, uh, there's a whole, there was a schedule and, um, the resolution, or is it, I stopped. First the schedule, he gives how much money?
It's on the last.
I heard last footage, I was asking about Republic Finance Law Group, twenty-five thousand. The whole municipal law, so their legal fee is twenty-five hundred. Municipal finance service is any financial advisory fee and out of our expenses, twenty-five thousand, some are presented.
Yeah, the other, that's, that was who I, the attorney that we talked to Thursday night.
Yes.
That's, he's the one for the twenty-five thousand, he's a bond, uh, finance.
We're gonna shop and find it for people of our, yes, our city abilities.
Okay, so I already have a couple.
He's the one that kinda put this together at this point. Will be filing, filling out the application for the town.
And it could be done by the fifteenth, the application for this year?
They've been working on it since Thursday night. Thursday night.
Okay, so.
Best, most of it's later played.
You don't have to have a plan for the application.
He was mentioning a plan.
That's what the contract is for, is to create the plan.
Yeah, okay, not Matt, then another person.
No, another person handles the application.
Gotcha, okay, I just wanna be clear on that.
This is gonna bring a lot of money for Matt.
Yeah.
And I appreciate Matt bringing this to us, and anyway, somebody, somebody to make money, by all means, I'm all for it. But we're not giving anybody else a chance to even talk to us about what they can do engineering wise, what they would call us to do it, et cetera. This is just, oh, Matt wants to do it.
This is a planning grant, yeah, true, yes.
Even a planning grant.
Not a planning grant, a planning law, a, he's gonna do a planning.
Financing a plan anyway.
Yes.
However, we're just...
I'm right.
Okay. We're not giving anyone else an opportunity to make the pitch to the board to say...
Well, I would say this, we wouldn't even know about this if it wasn't for him. Period.
Right now, we got...
Nobody else came to us. Nobody else said, hey, well, you know, you can get this.
And we didn't go out to anybody else either.
No.
Okay. Problem is, is that we haven't given anybody the opportunity to do it. So that's...
So you wanna wait another year? I mean, that's the choice. And I'm gonna make a motion right now that we approve this resolution, approve Matt's professional service agreement, make the fifteenth agreement. If we don't get it, if the town is not, does not have any exposure. If... If we do get it, we're gonna pay.
He's gonna... He's gonna... He's gonna bet that on us?
We're gonna pay, we're gonna get the loan over here.
I... I can hear it. There's some others.
I'm sure that you...
I got a motion. Do I have a second?
No, sir.
I might have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, folks.
That's fine.
Okay, next... Next thing is this decision possible action in the way the old R W B annual...
Oh, R W B.
So, R W B.
Yes. Sorry.
Two hundred fifty dollars.
That's a... Or something to... Last year?
That was old man.
Oh, it's old man.
But we do... We've been doing a lot with... Well, that's who's come out. That's came in to dislodge judge and they've been out several times with us. Do you get any time credit against your certificate? How many hours?
I don't know. I couldn't tell you.
You can. How many hours you supposed to have? And how often?
It's annually.
Yeah.
I think it's...
Four or eight.
Four or eight.
It is four or eight.
Four. Four a year.
That's the... But I could be wrong.
I mean, what? I'm sorry.
I think for the amount of work that... Contact so he can make any other ones that could be discussed, but may prove beneficial to the town. Oklahoma Water Association. Another one of those acronyms.
Ah, you keep driving back and forth to their hotel. I mean, I spend the night. I mean, it's not just two hundred and fifty dollars. It's travel time, it's hotel time if you spend the night. Well, I'm not asking what the other associated cost would be.
This is just the cost of the conference itself.
Now, if he just wants to go down there and not, you know, just drive back... I drive back and forth between Oklahoma City and then go to these conferences. And cover your mileage and forget the hotel. Because I go to conferences Oklahoma City all the time. It's fifty mile... Well, Norman's sixty mile round.
Yeah, I've made a few questions down there too. It's actually the end of the day, driving back in traffic. Would...
We can do this.
It's true. Okay, well, I'm making a correction. And driver the fuel.
That's my...
Okay, you got that? Got the motion?
Yep.
Do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. If that's a possible action approaching the iPad for this... This system?
What's this?
Doing this out here, why would we need that?
That's why this needs to be tabled to make sure that that's... I'm pretty sure that will be included in... And if it is, there's no need for the iPad.
Because that's what we're doing out here. I don't think maybe... Of course, I don't think they need the iPad.
Well, we've adopted a number of different mapping softwares, et cetera.
Well, we didn't know that we were gonna do this other thing. So right now...
The mapping software that we need to do will translate. Hopefully, we'll have copies of that. It will be digital.
Okay, can we...
Having the iPad has given the opportunity to be able, and his daily work...
Well, I'm just making a motion that we table it now until we understand more of what Matt's gonna be doing.
I'm good. Does that one sound until we understand it better?
No. If we understand it better, then maybe we can go with it later. That way, you know, we'll share what we got. I have a motion?
I made a motion to table it.
Okay. Can I say it all in favor?
Aye.
These special possible action, the second policy for new water tap. Thought we just did that.
We never... We talked about it, but we never said anything. So...
We said, no, we shut the sewer. We didn't do the water because it was so damn expensive.
Yeah.
Okay, so you're not talking about you dig a hole and you attach a collar. You're talking about how much do we wanna pay for a water tap? Or charge for a water tap?
This is for a new water tap.
For a new water tap, yeah.
Okay, so this is not...
This is opening up the...
This is not setting a policy. This is for a new water tap procedure. This is not... We're not talking about water tap procedures. We're talking about water tap fees.
Right.
Yes.
Oh, you never set the...
We never shut the fire.
That's cool. So how much does it cost?
Okay, so...
It's gonna vary from year to year.
Right. Based on what the cost of the meter and the setter, a box and a lid. And then we have a quote for eight hundred dollars from Gray Works Construction to do the tap. The total there is thirteen hundred and twenty dollars. My suggestion would be to set the rate at fifteen hundred because there's other parts that are gonna be needed for that. And so that'll cover that. And then we have talked before about doing it, wording it to where if rate changes, it fluctuates, we're not gonna redo this every time.
Yeah, something about the labor cost.
In accordance with market cost.
Market value.
Yeah, yeah.
Material costs.
Material costs.
So cost plus labor.
Material and labor.
Right. So that would be your rate, but it's gonna be based on whatever the cost of your materials are plus your labor.
Okay, that's fine. Well...
Did you hear that?
Something about material costs. But so I guess once the price is confirmed, I can create a resolution. We can pass that at that special meeting. So we've got somebody who wants a meter.
Yes.
And the last time we talked about it, the cost was like that. So anyway, this is a better...
So fifteen hundred in accordance with current market cost. So it goes forward. It goes up, that cost can go up too. Just have to make your word for a reservation.
We'll talk about the wording.
Yep.
Okay. Then we go to a special meeting. Well, maybe you can pass that around to us and we can call me.
Yeah, I'll work on it and... Yes.
But I have to give it back. Do we need to...
Well, no, we'll approve it. We will table it for a split. We will table approval for that special meeting.
So is that a motion to pass that for a special meeting?
Yes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
To discuss possible action with support.
There's the mower. That sucker. Is it paid off yet, Wendy?
The check will be in the mail tomorrow.
I think you... Let me just bring it home.
I was looking at all the costs. There's a hundred dollar package for, is that your filters to change the oil? There's a hundred and some odd dollar maintenance package.
Isn't there a oil filter?
Yeah, it should be plugged with oil filter. I don't know what's in there. It just says maintenance.
So my understanding on that mower is that the motor itself and the things that make it go are in decent shape, just needs regular maintenance. It's the deck, the spindles, the blades, bearings that need to be replaced.
Are they squeaking? What happens when a bearing goes out?
Uh, it gets squealer, lock up the whole thing.
And, okay, but that's not happening now. There's not... Is it making any noises to say my bearings are going out? I know the spindles were changed last year. Do you know that?
They were actually shot.
Okay, then until we get the irrigation field leveled, you're gonna tear another one up. So I don't think we need to worry about level of grass in the irrigation field. We've got the scag. Did we get the scag out too? Get it cleaned?
Uh, we was kinda waiting for this, just to get by this first.
Well, you need to get, make sure the scag's in... That's... The scag mows the cemetery better than this thing does because of its size. The scag also can mow the ball... I mean, when you need a good clean cut, use the scag. This thing is... And the reason I was asking if it's paid off is when we bought this, the previous Spartan was only two years old and we got over a three thousand dollar trade-in on it. I would be happy if this thing got a couple thousand dollar trade-in on one, and it better not be a Spartan. I don't want to ever see a Spartan.
That should have given the engine that's on it. It does have a... It has a giddy engine.
Oh, that's what I'm saying. We need to find out what the trade-in value is on it. And trade the sucker in before we start putting junk on junk. Because that's, it's gonna turn into junk again until we get that... Until we get some smooth ground. I mean, who cares if it's cutting even? Does the deck prevent it from cutting? And that's gonna be this new maintenance guys, he may scream to high heaven. But we're gonna say, hey, you're cutting this, this rutted out irrigation field over there. You know, keep it knocked down so we don't have snakes running around and we're happy. I don't... That's my opinion.
And it's really the culverts that tear it up as much as I mean, that trine mode.
Well, we may need to keep it for the culvert work.
I'm saying there are many things around town that tear your mowers up. It's not just the irrigation field.
Do we just need to do those big wheels to go around those culverts and stuff that that will clean it out easier? You know what I mean? Where the wheel, it's like a big weed eater.
Yeah, I know.
And that would be...
I've got one of those at the house.
That's... I mean, that's what I use to do the areas and advance and all kinds of things.
Well, but at the end of the day, it's...
We need a commercial.
The Spartan is a little bit larger than a mower for the job that we use it for.
Yeah. That's what I was saying, the big wheels is like what it's...
Well, when you go smaller...
Let's not talk about it right now. Get the new gag in. Let's bring it along with the... So you can change the oil plug. We do wanna take care of the motor because it does have trade-in value with the motor. And we'll see, like I said, I know the spindles were changed last year.
We changed the spindles twice last year. They were jacked up twice.
Well, one, rough ground.
Well, rough ground, hitting stuff.
You got a...
Yeah.
That's the bottom line with your mower.
Well, anyway, the spindles on those dudes, like on the scag, you can... Around three hundred dollars to replace all of them, and these are four hundred and something apiece.
Yeah.
You gotta walk it for your mower.
So it's a very high maintenance.
My first thing, get rid of that. You have to worry about that.
I would like to know what it would cost to replace. Just find out. Us getting a floor changer, replacing a deck, replacing spindles and all that is not that difficult to do. That's kind of... That's kind of the problem. Or not doing this, but...
Well, I checked. But I checked on the internet. The internet, you can order spindles for maybe thirty dollars a piece less. They're not that far off.
Okay.
I did check some of those. They're... They just are that freaking expensive.
For some reason, Spartan spindles are like four hundred dollars a piece. There's no reason for that.
Best thing to do is get it back here. But yeah, get rid of it.
Because the spindle's long was what, fifteen, seventeen hundred dollars?
And in my...
So that's... Put that on the mower. I don't know that we need to...
Try and...
Well, I think it's too big, but what we tried to do, we traded down what Casey Jones got the first time. He just thought he's gonna go out there and do three passes and be done. And it didn't work. And so we stepped down. We may have an environment that even this mower is too large for it. And we may need to step down a little bit, you know, pay a little more labor to run the around a couple times more. But get something that doesn't get torn up because it's just too big to do the job.
I'm gonna pay more labor to try to go faster because you're not as big.
Oh, so there you go. Anyway, I make a motion, we bring the sucker home and change its oil and filter, I mean, oil, spark plugs. And we can use it. It runs. Well, it does run. It just doesn't cut even. It nothing squealing. We don't have anything squealing on it right now. If a spindle goes out, it's not gonna deteriorate its value until we find us another mower.
I'll second the motion to bring it home and do the...
Take care of the motor.
You guys know, I say it all in favor?
Aye.
Sorry. Clarification. We're doing the kit thing through them. We want them to do that and that's it.
No, I think Wade can change the oil, I think. I don't want to speak to Wade. But yeah, but he needs the kit. He needs the filters, he needs the spark plugs.
So we're buying it from them. We're not having them install it.
Okay, yeah.
You might want Wade to do it.
Oh, you might need... Maybe Wade's. Buy something from them. They at least went through it and gave us an estimate and all of that. I mean, blades, sound good. What else?
Maybe belt, but I don't know. You don't always have a belt in the middle of summer, not be able to...
Okay. Whatever. Did you hear Wade say?
General maintenance supplies for it.
The belt?
No major replacements such as spindles and deck, but blade, belt, the typical consumables.
Have you... A C O G, right?
Hey, Jay.
ACOG.
Okay, what you can still say about this?
Yeah, it looks like term.
So we've made some progress on that, I guess. It's not where we went to short two or three hour class about how the process works and how essentially the town will be... It's a reimbursement grant, and so we pay for the work and show ACOG that the work has been done, and then they send us a check paying for that portion of the work. Now, we've also spoken with ACOG at some length about the town not being able to always have that much cash on hand to have all the work completed at one time like that. So ACOG and REIT, whoever you wanna call them, are going to work with us in how they structure that reimbursement, whether we get any money upfront and that kind of thing so we can actually initiate the work. On that same note, I spoke with, and I wanted to just mention that Jeannie went to that class, I went to that class, you went to that class, and Dusty, did you go?
I wasn't able to. Yeah, you did go.
So let me just talk over your first hand. So when I...
I'm glad they're talking over.
I wanna make sure that we get, everything we do for ACOG needs to be run through our minutes so that you guys see it, and then everything that we wanna buy has to be signed up by one of the trustees.
Before we place the order?
Yes. Yes, and they're not at the same time we write the check.
Right.
Yep. So they are going to rewrite our contract. And they're in the process of rewriting it to give us more lead way so we can get more upfront or like pay as you go instead of having to out-of-pocket ours. And I wonder whether or not Lyddie had gotten anything from, uh, Smollett, Delorean, B E L O E R A. Okay, so we'll follow up on her.
So they're gonna be putting out stipends of, of this thing instead of us paying upfront, then that...
That's a possibility, they usually only give 25%, but because I had a one-on-one with her, Jason had a sidebar with her, we were at different times. She could see the issue we had, we told her how much money we had, that if we had any accident or, you know, emergency in the town, we would not be able to pay.
Right.
And, um...
Which could be a problem.
And they're gonna give us, we need that, from talking to Jason, in my understanding too, we've gotta let her that we were granted the money, the 143,000 plus. But it's gotta be in a contract, we have to, you have to sign it.
Yeah, probably have to.
And we have, we have like 60 days to turn it back. But we also only have this year to do it.
We gotta have it.
So, uh, I think January 15th is the lesson.
So we have to have the work done.
We gotta have the work done, we gotta get after it, so we both have been working on...
And we're, we're talking about fixing the spray field, fixing the, the valves.
And this is where Jason's gonna talk, talk, he's reworking some of that, and they're gonna let us.
I was gonna jump back in there for just a second. The contract that she's talking about is...
It's got like a tag or something.
It's a contract between ACOG and the town essentially laying out the terms, what, what we're responsible for, what they're going to be doing and that type of thing. So that'll be, that's supposed to come out, she said, early to mid-March, so that's why we're waiting. We're still, we cannot begin anything on the, the contract that's here inside.
And by April, sometimes it's in April, so we've got this window that we're...
Well, we're trying to get, yeah, trying to get everything in a row, so at the end of the day, we're ready to do this. I spoke with Edwards this morning about a number of things, but a lot of those did include the finance. Uh, and he's willing to break it up into several, several work orders. Uh, however, we need to do it based on how we...
So instead of paying for the whole project, we'll pay for the work that's getting done when it gets done?
As, as done, and we'll, we will break it into some logical chunks, uh, whatever, what works for, what makes sense for him to come out and do in a day or a two-day, whatever it happens to be.
If we had to span over a couple of weeks, if you're planning on a couple of days, that wouldn't be a problem.
Yeah, if we get to a glitch too on the payment, I'm gonna notify her every time we spend money or ask for money. Because their accounting automatically does this, this 25%, even though it's written into the contract, so that she's got it in her hands so she can walk it through, so we don't get in a bind. And it's just a government-type thing, because we talked about that. So I just, I want you to know, like, oh, well, that's...
So we're not getting work done that we don't have money to cover?
Well, they're telling, they're telling department just that.
They're, they're, they're very specific, they're giving us a different grace.
But I do want to know the date that the checks are written.
Yeah, that's what I'm supposed to find out. So that basically the accounting department is separate from the ACOG and REIT people.
Yeah, because I'm trying to hit, if we get it turned in, let's say a week ahead of time, so that it goes through their approval process, so we don't have... I'd hate to turn it in the, the day after they pay.
Everything that, also, everything that we put out, any report or anything, has to be legible. If it is not legible and they can't read it, they're not gonna pay it.
I know, they don't have to write it, they, they actually...
I need to interject one more thing. Lyddie and I have been working on statutory requirements for expending this amount of money. We don't normally expend this amount of money. And what the, I guess, November 22, they revised the purchasing statutes of the state of Oklahoma that we have to live by as a town or anybody else that's a, you know, that's a government entity. And I actually called our state auditor that audits our embezzlement, and he, he's not a grant dude, but he doesn't audit grants, I mean, the state auditor could audit our grants. And that's why we have to keep this...
Same time with the town, absolutely.
Yeah, but, so I was talking to Reiner, and because we started this project in May of last year, that's why you can't fuck. No, but my point being, his suggestion was, go out to bid. We have time to publish in the Oklahoma City paper. If anybody shows up other than Edwards, good. Good, if not, we're clear. We do not need additional bids, we've advertised bids.
That's good, that's good, that's good information.
And so we may be out a few hundred dollars running these ads. But we need to get it out there, as soon as we sign the contract, and I forgive how many times we have to run it, but then we're ready to go, but it's, it's like a...
Yeah, so we wanna, we wanna copy of every one of these things that were done to put, so that I've got, I'm not putting that in, I just start a folder for me of things that you've done so that I can document that while I'm working with ACOG, the two of us can, so that the city doesn't get in trouble.
Well, right now, there's a...
Well, they don't have to lay back.
Right now, with what we have shovel ready are the pumps, the irrigation fields, the header, the heads, the control panel, and you're yet to bring us the final bids from Edwards, who's to approve.
About, well, final bids, oh, on all the work, well, all of the work, all they have is... Initial estimates and all of those, they're gonna be fairly accurate because I think so, well...
Okay, but point being, as soon as we get the contract, we really shouldn't be running ads until we got the contract.
Okay, that sounds like, I'll call her tomorrow.
Okay, I'll call her. Number one, number two, we, well, we should have it, it's gonna be over $50,000 if, what we've been talking with Edwards about. If we can have two projects, that's one project, then it's all covered in, in the bid process if we go out to bid on that section. That leaves the remainder, whatever that final, leaves the leveling of the lagoons, either through...
Now, that leaves us with 50, 93,000.
I've discussed the leveling, oh, the...
I'm sorry.
The leveling of the lagoons?
I was about to get into...
But I was gonna ask one question, and then I'll shut up. Did we ever get the sludge test in writing?
They're working on getting us a report.
Because that, we will need that for the change in scope.
Yeah.
We don't have it?
We don't have it, she was creating a report for it.
They're, they're ready for the change of scope, but we just need that.
They're not ready, I, I'd really like to discuss the change of scope myself since everybody else seems to know what's going on with it.
We don't know anything, yes.
Before you go, just, also, we got a backup on this year. There's a 60-day extension, we have to request it through the director. And they could possibly, we need a 30-day more, we can do it.
Passive change?
Pass, yeah, but I just, we've got a little wiggle room, and I'm just giving you the information.
I, I don't think any of us anticipate we'll need it.
No, but...
But that's good to know, that's there, that we do. We may have another platform for consumer.
Yeah, water, whatever, yeah.
So on the change of scope, I am, I'm assuming that the report's gonna come back and say that we don't have enough sludge to warrant a dredging of the lagoon, which we asked for in the initial grant. The reason that we have to have that report is because when we created the initial grant, I spoke to several people who, maybe not considered experts in their field, but were at least professionals in their field, who seemed to think that the lagoon probably needed dredging. So if that's no longer the case, I need to prove to ACOG that the lagoon no longer needs dredging. If we assume that the lagoon no longer needs dredging, that leaves us with a fairly large amount of money that we can move over to other projects within the lagoon capacity restoration, uh, in other words. That excess money cannot be used on fences, it can't be used on the lift station, it can't be used anywhere but where we've already been doing our stuff. So we're gonna have to add some new things to it. Primary, I, I asked Edwards today for a couple more bids. First off, on the, so if, for anyone who's familiar with how the discharge pump works, there's a concrete system that sits directly in, the lagoon goes down to the bottom of the lagoon, and that's what the pumps drop down into. And on top of that, when you need to service those pumps, there's an iron grating that is, it also is what supports those pumps from go, keeps them from dropping down into the hole and breaking our pipes off. That iron grating is probably about 40% rusted away. Uh, there's just not a lot of steel left there in it, so I'm having him bid to replace it, because that wasn't in the original deal, was replacing all of that. I'm calling it the support structure for the pumps, uh, that wasn't in the original bid. So that, something that we're looking at, uh, we're looking at potentially doing some upgrades to the, the control panel to make it, not fancy, but give us a little bit more of an ability to say and forget it for a few days, a month at a time, where essentially we would be able to control how often, which days it goes off, how often it goes off, and even how much we're discharging during that period while also keeping its own record of how much it is discharging, so that...
Which is part of the requirement we're supposed to be maintaining in this office, is what our discharge levels again.
Now, I had originally wanted to go a different direction, I, I do wanna mention this now. And this, originally, I've, I've seen several people in here heard me talking about how the, the discharge lagoon, the levee needs to be repaired because of its cave. The last, when we had that major flood several years ago, the riprap washed into the bottom of the lagoon along with probably 25% of the inside of the levee bank was washed down into the bottom of the lagoon. So that needs to cut out.
That's the discharge lagoon?
No, it's the, by Friedenberg's house.
The very first one.
No, the discharge, no, the discharge lagoon.
You're saying, oh, the discharge lost to Oslo?
Yeah, the, the one by Friedenberg really didn't lose that much dirt.
Well, I know it was about the top.
Yeah, but it, it, for whatever reason, I couldn't tell you why.
Why didn't I have a look at the discharge?
Well, the waves, it would have been, it actually would have been because the discharge lagoon almost overtopped, you had high winds, and the high winds were knocking the waves into the shore and bringing it down. Anyways, it's that lagoon, doesn't matter, we can't do any of that stuff because we can't actually get those, we can't draw the water down to a level that any dirt work can be done on the levees or in the lagoon to find pipes or anything like that. Which makes it even more important that we get these pumps up, and it leads to the last thing that we're considering looking at the change of scope on, and that would be a big four-inch self-priming trash pump, it would be on a, be on wheels. Now, fully used, it, it would potentially have secondary use that I don't think we could, should, or can mention in the grant. If you get a four-inch one, you can tie it directly to the lift station at the top, and in the, the event of a lift station failure, you can bypass the lift station directly and go into the lagoon.
Okay, so it could be useful, but for our purposes?
For our purposes, as for drawing down the lagoons, for getting the water to go from cell three to cell two, or from cell one into cell two, so that we can do dirt work in the different areas in future projects when we can actually draw down the lagoon. Because once you draw, you can never draw down any of the lagoons to the point you can work on just with the discharge system. You have to run the discharge system, get everything low as you can, and then you put the contents of one lagoon into another lagoon, because you can't ever put the water outside the lagoon other than through the discharge system.
You need to fix your diversion box then, so you can stop the...
We need to fix the diversion, I, I actually asked Edwards to bid for that, building the redwood panels that go into the berder box that would allow us to...
And shut one or the other.
So those are, but at the end of the day, none of that... Nobody needs to make any decisions on any of that stuff tonight, it's very preliminary discussions. We have enough shovel work to keep us occupied, well, going into it, these are just...
Getting the pumps.
These are, but these are gonna be things that are gonna, we're gonna come up and discuss some more uh, when we get the contract, when we get the report from the sludge people, so I just wanna let you know the direction that we're going.
But right now, we're trying to get, we wanna get, get the irrigation working at the max capacity, which means both sections being irrigated and the heads all working and... Now, would you check on one other thing? Because Lyddie, you mentioned, someone mentioned to you, and these are people that are trying to be helpful, but sometimes are good ideas. Does the control panel need to be sheltered? That's a question for them.
They are rated to be sheltered.
I was gonna say, if they're properly insulated, then they should require it. But that's something that needs to be considered, is if they're properly insulated still.
The best filter...
Well, they're gonna be new, it's gonna be a new control panel.
I, I will say, you spend a lot of money and you don't get much from it.
For what?
For putting a shelter around something like that.
I'll just make a tea here.
I know, I'm not, I'm not discounting...
No, 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 I just ask, I just wanna make sure that they are rated.
So the type of stuff that gets inside of there are typically those wasps and spiders and stuff, and a shelter doesn't help that, and they're completely, they're fairly impervious to rain. I've gone out there and opened them up after a delusion, they're dry as bone inside.
Okay. Give me one question here, we did originally talk about shifting over to, uh, doing the freeboard around the dunes, because we know that we've got a little bit of loss there. You're looking at more, you just want to upgrade the electronics, et cetera.
It'll, I don't think, I think there's enough money there that we can look at electronics upgrades in addition to things like pumps, and there may even be some other, I, I wanna get...
Well, the freeboard, I mean, the, the dike repair.
Right, well, the dike repair we can't do unless we can draw down the lagoons.
Which the first part of the grant should help too, of course, that, but then you're...
And if we can all get that done in the year's timeframe and all that, then it, it'd be great, I mean, it'd be awesome.
So it would probably be a lot easier to get another grant to go through and bring dirt down, fill dirt, and whatever else we need to bring up the level of the freeboard of the lagoon than it would to get all the electronic pieces apart.
Yes, but they, they could give us a grant two years in a row, but they don't always do it.
Right.
So just, just factor that, but we're gonna ask, because we've got so much more work on that.
We can look at other funding too, but at the end of the day, we cannot draw down the lagoon without the current work that's slated to be done.
I don't have a ball on it, I'm just trying to make sure that we...
I wanna lay out the picture here of, of how, and since we cannot, no dirt work can be done on the levees till we can draw it down. We may, we may be able to get to a point that we can draw them down enough and get somebody in, because it's gonna take planning too on the dirt work, and it's gonna take bids, and it's gonna take, so that's... I'm leaning towards that being another project regardless of where the funding comes from. But we don't know where we go, and, and there may come, we may get into this thing and stuff may pop up. I would love to drop some concrete buckets with some measuring things on there so that we know what the height that... We don't even know what our freeboard is, because we can't measure it. We don't know what our inflow is, we can't measure it. Best we can do on our outflow is estimate what our stupid halfway broken pump system might pump during the day and keep track of the number of hours we run the pump.
I, I think it makes a lot of sense. Um, my confusion came because we previously discussed building a freeboard, and now you're coming up with all the toys, bells, and whistles.
It's mainly because it...
It makes sense, I mean, it makes sense.
It's money that we don't find a way to use it.
But I would like to see, if you get the pump brought down, you may not have the money to fix all of the freeboard, but you may have enough money to fix the most dangerous.
Well, that may be, that may be an issue too, if you can't fix it all, then I'm gonna pay for the top of it, but that's something that we can...
And please keep in mind too, that in this planning, if, if it goes through, that may not go through at all, but this planning thing that Matt's trying to do would cover the engineering and the design needed to completely fix the, all of the levees, not, not just the discharge or anything else, but to come in and bring the levees back to the level that they need to be, bring the depth of the lagoons to where they need to be, get the lines to where they need to be. I mean, what he was wanting to plan is a...
I, I really appreciate your answer to my question, Floyd, so...
Yeah, he tried to go, he tried to go bad, it's not a call.
All right, thank you very much.
Yeah, we're the weeds.
Water report?
Water report.
Uh, meters red, water testing done. Pid up that leaky center at Virginia's, it stopped leaking, so...
She had the problems every day, so I figured we had...
I told you, you guys were working on it.
Nice water.
Well, we won't bring that to some call issue again, but, you know, other than that, I've just been trying to fill the sap ones around the lagoon.
Good.
Something coming up.
All right. New business.
This makes sense. I haven't known.
Educational facilities, community boards, that's... No call?
Rusty King?
Yeah?
Rusty Hale?
Here.
Mayor.
We're fucking yes. You got anything I want to ask?
Everybody else heard something about this.
Okay, Mrs. Dinda?
All I can say is that they're working on eleven years of, or eleven, twelve years of audits. I don't know when they're gonna get any, but, and I will say that Mr. Cagle has asked for an estimate of the final invoice, schools on hand, and understands that they're on the hook for this. And nothing has really changed on the estimate that we gave him from last month. So, and all will be open for an end of that one. This one will be basically a three-month audit for the last year. Well, we paid off the bonds in September, so it's July, August, September. So it should be a very small audit of the school, because our funds will be extended by that time.
Should we ask you a question? Will this, both on the bond, even, I know they're saying no taxes, but we all know that somewhere that money's coming from. Is that going to affect this in any way? Does it extend it? It doesn't do anything?
I'll be honest with you. I don't exactly where it's coming from. So our, on our millage, it was always set at like fourteen thirty-three in this last three years. So what I'm saying now, I'm saying twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, but if, our millage would have stayed at this consistent peak. It didn't, because in June, uh, July, they have what's called needs assessment that the school does. And that needs assessment number is filed with the state first of October, and then that's how your taxes are figured. So they went from fourteen, you know, but, you know, the number's sizable, but they're, to twenty-two, twenty-one is what you got your... So everybody got a hike in their taxes this year. Well, it was under because they want, they were playing with percentages to say, we're only gonna raise it twenty-five percent or forty percent, because we're really at thirteen. And once we paid that out, we'd have gone back down to nothing. So it, this number, they paid a whole year this year already. So again, we're playing with the numbers again. That's why they're saying it's not gonna cost you anything.
No, 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 no. Let's be, let's be clear.
Okay, go ahead.
No additional taxes.
But it was, it should have stayed at that number.
Well, they're saying...
Because we, your taxes went up.
All of our taxes.
And you got nothing, you got, you got nothing for it.
That's right.
So they played with numbers.
Yes.
And they just left it, and then they just would say, hey, our, you know, we wanna do this stuff on the roof. It's gonna cost X, Y, Z. So they got a little money from us upfront now. They're gonna get more money next year.
Essentially, it extends what they already have in taxes across. So there's no new taxes once it's bought, because the taxes are already applied.
I realize they're gonna keep the millage up.
Yeah, that, well, they, I, my problem is that they didn't shoot straight. Just tell me what you're doing.
Do you know how much the school is?
Yeah.
How much?
Uh, I've got it at home. I've got it all broken down. They got, what Volus says, they've got seventy percent of the money is gonna be used for some of these repairs, but they got another thirty percent of the, it's around four million or something. It is, it's like seven, yes, like four million.
Well, who's gonna release the, who's gonna sell, they can't sell four million dollars with the bomb.
Who's gonna do, well, they have contacted us to settle.
Now, that's my question to you.
Yeah.
That you're asking.
Okay, sure. They got a meeting, whatever, I'm sure they...
This Thursday.
Well, but they, so that's a question that you gotta ask.
Well, I'm not gonna call Cagle and ask him.
And then they got that seven hundred thousand roofs that they're doing, and they also talk about, like, they might use that thirty percent of the money for buying something. So is it buying cars or is it buying property? They don't lay it out specifically.
Are they doing another, this window washing to try to snowball this?
Well, I think what they're really doing is trying to, again, this is my thought process. This, do not take that for...
Jimmy, if I can interrupt for just a moment.
You wanna quit?
You guys are probably wanting to continue this conversation. It has no...
Go on, let's go with it. Can we please, yeah, let's finish this meeting. Thank you.
I'll make a motion to adjourn. Oh, sorry.
Your business.
Your business, man, here. I'll make a motion to adjourn.
A second.
So I feel like they're doing, like, what the shirt, what the shirt doesn't begin with, is to say, like, we need somebody who's gonna tear down the buildings. And we'll work on tearing down the buildings. That's what I'm saying. That bomb, that's the, that's why the buildings, they're, they're saying, and debt us for twenty-two years, because we wouldn't have been able to, we had a long out of millage, so we wouldn't have been able to add to that millage if anything happened, put the school system up. You know, you know, you have just a little amount. Because by law, they can do, uh... Until I'm tired, a percentage of what the school is valuing. So if the school's valued at thirty million, they can borrow three million. So tip it. So that's all we really could borrow. So it's, hey, we don't do a standard mill or a standard bond. We actually go out and they give a break on smaller schools. So they go shop at a higher rate.
I'm not talking.
To buy the bonds. And it's handled totally different. So it's, well, I'm... And, but, now, I mean, I'm a little first schooler, but I wanna be, what kind of community network? Because the homeowners and the letting owners, that's who's gotta pay for it. So can we afford, we can afford to have what school I've got, or any of these other schools, you have to piece me what to do, do this and prove it. Well, I was working on that school. I worked on a five-year plan for education, because it's the educational piece we don't have at that school. It's not that building. It's teaching those classes and what those schools are. I sent those board names for three solid years until COVID hit. And listened to everyone. I was the only one in there. So one time, they were giving money, they were giving money, and they were doing it, and they're, I asked them about the education plan. There's a book called State School Law Book. It's for all states. It's about over a thousand pages. And everything you wanna know is online. And they do it like every two years. You want them looking at, whether it's special needs, or...
Well, then, that's...
Or below, administration, and it's, and it's in that, so, that's our gun. And it's easy, it's simple enough to understand, you know. But my goal would be applying to the state. And it sounds, you know, it just sounds like, it's sort of simple, but you can't hold on to it.